Good evening and welcome to the July 22, 2019 City Council Workshop. Tonight, we only have, well, we've got three different items on our new business agenda. Let's see. Assistant City Manager Funk, would you do our roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening. A roll call this evening, I'll just go across the dais. Councilmember Judeman.
Here.
Councilmember Knutson.
Here.
I'll take you last, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Neblet.
Present.
And Councilmember Smith.
Here.
And then Mayor Abrams.
Here.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Neblet, seconded by Smith, a motion to approve the agenda. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no unfinished business tonight, and we have, as I said, three items under new business. We have a budget overview for 2020. We have a Finance Department presentation, and then a presentation by Public Works. Both Finance and Public Works presentations are concerning the budget for next year. So, let's see. Finance Director Paul Seth, do you want to step up to the dais? Welcome tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have a PowerPoint if we could get that up. There we go. Thank you. So, Mayor and Councilmembers, if you can hear me okay. Tonight, we are going to do something just a little bit different. We will still have our two regular budget workshops in August where we will dive a little bit deeper into the details. We've added this workshop this year for several different reasons. This will be just sort of a high level, sort of to test the council's preferences this year. Take a look at what the priorities are and what the problems and challenges are, and kind of get an idea of which direction the council would like to go. Kind of, we can take a little bit of the council's temperature to kind of see if what we are putting together is where you'd like us to go. So, again, our workshop objectives tonight would be, again, a very high-level overview. We won't be delving in real deep. It's high-level estimates. And we'll talk a little bit about the timeline and the budget process, so we don't have to do that next time. And a little bit about the increases in service levels. Again, this is all based on our strategic priorities. Everything we do in the budget is based on our strategic priorities. So, everything you see here, the City Manager and I and the department heads have all looked at through this, through the lens of our strategic priorities. So, we'll get right to the, right to the hot topic tonight. What we are looking at, or what we are proposing this year, and we'll get into the reasons, but we're proposing a 5% increase in the levy this year. Last year, there was a 3%. So, this is just a high-level look at how much a 4%, 4.5%, and a 5% levy increase will generate in terms of tax dollars. So, as you can see, the 5% generates the most, the 1.1 million. And that's what we are proposing this year. And we'll go into a little bit of a discussion about why. Again, these numbers are still being refined. I'm confident in the bottom line. Some of these other numbers are just rough level estimates right now, but this is kind of where we're at. The challenges that we have over and above last year total about 1.3 million. So, our 1.1 million in property taxes does not quite cover all of our challenges. So, just, just so that you know that, I mean, we have found other ways to work out some of these issues. One of them is that we will not levy the $200,000 reserve fund this year. That is generally required for us to have the adequate enough level of reserves. And the reason we would not be doing that is because we are getting a one-time payment from state aid in the amount of $350,000. That is actually a payment that is paying the general fund back for some payments it made on behalf of the English 36 Project many years ago. That's, that's another story, a longer story, but because of that one-time money, we will not have to levy for the additional reserves that we typically have to in order to keep up to the percentage that is required for us to have in reserves. Again, we will have to reinstate that next year, so that will be our first budget challenge for next year. But, so that is, that is basically how we are closing the gap between the 1.3 million and the 1.1 that we could raise with the 5% levy. I could walk through most of these, I'll try to summarize it. Most of the, in fact, about 4%, close to 4%, is really payroll-related. To begin with, we had a planned hiring of two police officers last year. We put them on in mid-year for a specific reason, so that we could spread it over two fiscal years, spread the increase over two fiscal years. So, they came on in mid-year last year, and this year, they will be on for a full year, so that was an additional $100,000. The PERA rate for police and fire has increased, costing $52,000 for the general fund. The general wage adjustments, everyone was given a 3% wage adjustment. That approaches about $350,000. There are other payroll increases as well, increases in overtime, increases in, some employees get step increases, not all. We had to increase our employee leave benefits reserve fund because of all the additional employees that were added last year, including firefighters and police officers and a couple others. But the biggest, the biggest part of it was the workers' compensation. That's what we didn't expect. So, workers' compensation premiums went up last year. They went up another 100 and, close to 150,000 this year. That's due to a number of different things. It's due to our experience mod rating, having a couple of tough years, but it's also due to the many new employees that were added, especially the firefighters who are rated at a very high rate. It's a very dangerous job. So, that was something that was a little bit more difficult for us to incorporate into the normal payroll increases this year. We had a couple of what I will call structural corrections. We had issues with the Recreation Programs Fund several years ago. It was put in, the recreation activities were put in a separate fund. I don't know why, but there was never any reserves put in that fund. So, currently, that fund is a $300,000 deficit. In addition to that, the levy that was established for it was $150,000 short of what was actually being expended. So, we have to correct that this year. I planned on trying to make a correction in the last year. This is our very last deficit fund that we have to solve. But since there were conversations that were going on with the YMCA about what kind of model we were going to have for recreation, we held off on that last year in order to keep our levy increase down to a 3%. We firmly know now that the city will be in the recreation business, so we will have to fix this structural problem, and that cost $200,000 in the levy. That does not erase the deficit that's in the general, or in the recreation fund. We'll be moving all the recreation activities back into the general fund, but there will still be a $300,000 deficit that we will continue to find, try to find solutions for. But just fixing, fixing the levy, the structural problem in the levy, the under levy was $200,000, and that didn't quite fix it all because we also need to establish a certain level of reserves because the general fund doesn't have enough reserves to absorb all of the need for the expenditures. So, 50,000 of that 200 was for addition to reserves, and then the rest of it will have to be dealt with next year. We did have revenue reductions, pet licenses, $10,000. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it all does add up, especially after the $40,000 in revenues that were, was given up last year for alarm fees. That alone, the 50,000 of those two is about a quarter of a percent. So, each of those, anytime we do lose revenue stream, it has to be made up somewhere, and it's typically property taxes. And there's a lot of pressure on the property tax levy, so it's very difficult sometimes to fit it in. The smallest area of increases were actually in increased services. We've been slowly trying to increase the EDA levy, only managed to fit in 20,000 this year. There was a fairly large increase in the dispatch contract with the county. The dispatching services were, it was much higher than this, but this is the amount, 60,000, that is hitting the general fund. And legal services are trending, you know, considerably above what they were in prior years, and we had a different sort of legal services model. So, that's just in a nutshell about the 1.3 million that is kind of over and above what was included in the levy last year. And really, the reason why we're having to ask for a 5% this year. Talk a little bit about the rental housing program. We've structured that in this budget.
Ms. Paul Seth, can I just ask you to go back to that slide?
Absolutely.
Because I think there's one thing that I'd like to highlight for council members. I had the benefit of meeting with Ms. Paul Seth and Ms. Coleman earlier this week to kind of go over this and look at this. And in studying this, just this particular page, there are so many things on this page that are really beyond our control. We've already approved the two police officers. The PERA increases, we have nothing to say about that. Council did approve the wage increases, and the step increases are already a contractual matter. The employee leave benefits as well, workers' compensation, you know, we didn't have any control over workers' comp increasing their rates. We did reduce the pet licenses, but, you know, looking at the dispatch contract, there's an awful lot of line items included in this particular slide where they are things that we just can't change. We don't have any control over, and it's, it's unfortunate, but it is also the reality of really going through this budget with staff to come up with a budget that is sustainable and responsible. And I guess I just wanted to highlight that because really, so many of these fall under that category. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Abrams.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate what you're saying. I think this is sort of top of mind for me right now because I'm also going through planning and budgeting in my day job as well, so we've been talking a lot about this sort of thing. I think where I have been, had a hard time with our budgeting process throughout is that I don't feel like we talk about both sides of budgeting, which is, which is additional need for funds and additional expansions, loss of revenue. Where we don't talk a lot is about cost out, and where are we costing things? Where are we taking costs out? So, for example, with the pet licensing here, first of all, it was 7,000, and when we talked about it in the, in the last meeting, not 10 annually was the estimate that we had gotten from, from our annual revenues. But we're not taking into account also the, the staff time that's being reduced by not doing that. So, we're talking about the gross revenue number, not the net impact number. And, and so, and I don't think it would be appropriate to talk about that on this slide, but when we talk about the overall impact, I think we need to talk about where are the cost impacts coming? Now, I also understand we're not going to, like, lose a headcount and have real cost savings because of that, but, you know, I do think we need to track where are we taking cost out throughout, throughout the city organization and year over year. I am, if, if I am going to be supporting a 5% levy increase, I want to know also that we're doing that after we have aggressively looked for cost out. You know, philosophically, when I look at this from a business perspective, I say, all right, essentially, what we're doing is raising the price of government, right? And when, when you look at raising a price, you look at what are your customers willing to pay for that they get value for? And what is it that costs are increasing that we got to figure out how to mitigate because we're not necessarily adding value for the customer? So, when I buy a desk chair, a new desk chair for somebody, that's not something a customer is willing to pay for, right? It's part of the cost of doing business, but it's somewhere where I'm going to have to probably offset that somewhere else versus when I, if the cost of steel goes up and I have to put that into a product, that is something I can pass along to the customer. So, as we think about these things, I think those cost outs are really important for us to understand because for those things, we can't necessarily pass on to, to our residents as levy. Those are things I think we need to look hard at offsetting with cost.
Councilmember Smith, thank you for your input. I would like to respond to a couple of things. I'll try to remember them in order. The, the amount that was in the budget for pet license fees was $10,000, and that's about the revenue that's been generated. I was not part of that, that whole staff report, so that is the amount that was taken out of the budget. Again, you're right, because there is no headcount reduction because of those services. That's absolutely right. And that's why we're presenting it this way is because we are talking about differences between the levy, last year's levy and this year's levy. We still have to levy for those people. The cost accounting part of it doesn't really matter because in the end, we still have to levy for those people. So, my last comment would be, this is extremely early. We typically do not meet this early, so this is very high-level information that we are trying to kind of get the pulse of the council on. Most of my colleagues are just starting to distribute information to department heads, and they're starting to work on their budgets. So, we are, you know, really, you know, quite a ways along while we are still waiting for a lot of information from different agencies. Budget information continues to come in and basically making adjustments day by day, not that it's going to change the levy, but to the actual budget. So, our next budget meeting in August will be much more prepared to have that kind of departmental-level cost information. It, it is quite complex, and so it's difficult to present, except at a, you know, at a more aggregated level. But we will be bringing that forward. We will be bringing more, bringing more of that information forward. So, thank you. So, we wanted to talk a little bit about the rental housing program because that is new for this year. That's a new program. So, how we structured the budget, or how we were planning on structuring the budget for this year, how we're going to be presenting it to you, and what's included in these levy numbers that we're talking about. We structured it so that the fees would cover the costs. And in fact, as you can see, the first column is what the staff proposed would be expenses of 353,000 and fees of 355,000. So, we, you know, we went back to the drawing board on it a little bit, and what's included in on this budget is 230,000 in expenses and 270,000 in fees. The reduction was because we were actually leveraging as part of the revenue existing, an existing portion of the levy, about $75,000 that we had for a police trainee. That was removed to make room for a rental housing officer, and it, you know, it ended up that we really didn't have room in the budget. We would have had to go over 5%. So, this was the decision that was made, was to take that position out for a year and work on getting it back in on a different year. So, that brought us to, and honestly, 270,000 is very, very conservative. It could very well be more than that, but we just don't have any experience yet. We're not up and running yet. We don't have people hired yet. The council hasn't even adopted the ordinance yet, so we're treading very lightly. We do expect that it may be more than that. But you'll see that we have a $40,000 surplus, and the point that I want to make with that is that $40,000 surplus is currently plugging a hole in the general fund. So, that already is reflected within that 5%. So, you know, adding more cost to this, which we certainly could do, would, would also increase the, the 5% levy increase. So, what, the difference was, is we held off on the police officer, the rental housing officer. It's in there for 1/10 of a year. So, kind of the same thing that we did last year by starting officers in the mid-year. This would allow a police officer to start at the end of 2020, and then we would figure out a way to roll it into, you know, assuming that the fees will cover it, to roll it into next year's budget. We also took out some of the administrative expenses. It was determined that probably the entire part of the administration could be handled in community development, and, and in that way, we would not have to increase the fire admin. So, that is how we saved that amount of money. And again, the caveat is, is that $40,000 or possibly more is actually filling other holes in the general fund. So, we'd be really concerned about, we wouldn't be asking for 5 if we didn't think it was absolutely necessary, and some of these reasons are why. A little bit more about the rental housing program. What we want you to understand is a long-term view of the rental housing program. So, if we take a look at how we've structured it now, and in this particular graph, I am back to the 280 for revenues. What I actually put in the budget was a little bit less, just to be on the safe side, but we do expect to get at least 280. So, I use that number. So, the gap between, the red line is the expenditures, and the green line is the revenues, and the gap between that is like 70, 70-something, 75,000 maybe. But that, that, that gap continues to grow in the revenues. So, on the green, the green line, you see that that, that doesn't really grow if we don't raise fees. And we have accounted for 1% per year increase in housing units, so that would be additional revenues. I've been told that that's probably too aggressive and that we need to be more conservative on that. But the point I'm trying to make is that the expenditures will grow because it's primarily wages, and so they, we've calculated a 3% per year. So, that by the end of that 10-year period, you have a gap of about $175,000. And if you add up those deficits for that entire 10-year period, it's about $2.1 million. So, the, what we were getting at there is the need to, if, if the council is not comfortable with having the tax levy pick, that, pick up those future deficits, we would plan on bringing back a new fee schedule every year when we do fees in December with a 3% or whatever the annual increase would be. But this, in this particular model, it's 3% because the expenditures were increased by 3%. And that would close that gap. We still have that $40,000 surplus in the first year that we're using in the general fund, but this is what it would take, is a yearly examination of those fees in order to keep up with not having property taxes pick up, pick up the, the deficit that will be there. So, what does that look like in terms of the fees that the actual landlords would have to pay? So, it's an annual license fee of $150 per building and $50 per unit. So, ostensibly, then that would increase roughly 3% per year. So, if you can kind of do that math. And then there'd be a reinspection fee, $0 for the first reinspection, $250 for the second, and $500 for the third. So, that's where that penalty kind of comes in. So, those are the fees that it would take to support what, what we have included, and those fees would need to be raised on an annual basis unless you are comfortable with property taxes picking up the difference. That's the point we wanted to make with that. So, one more step is to just give you an example of what kind of fees would be paid. So, for a single-family home, it's $200, all the way down to a multifamily of 150 units, that's $7650 per year. Theoretically, the landlord would be dividing that out and charging, charging that back to the tenants. I believe that, that one amounted to about $5 a month for the 150 unit. Tenants would probably see an increase in their rent. We're not trying to talk you out of the program at all. We just want you to be aware of what need, you know, how we need to be funding it and what we need to be aware of. So, what we have not funded in this year's budget that was really on, you know, the list was that rental housing police officer, number one, or at least nine tenths of it. The fire administration for rental housing, that may or may not be considered in, in next year's budget, but it's, it's being shown there because it's something we cut. We've had a long-time goal of trying to transfer some of the salaries over from the communications fund to the general fund. We know that we have to do that. That's been on the list every year, and it kind of keeps getting backed, backed off as a lower priority, but we will need to handle that, as we will also need to resolve the recreation fund deficit of $300,000. So, nothing in our 5% levy solves any of these things, and we will need to bring back the $200,000 fund balance reserve levy. There may be other ways we can fit these things in next year. Just letting you know that these things are still out there. There's always a list that doesn't get funded, and these are some fairly significant items. We need additional capital in our public safety fund to fund fire truck purchases so that we don't have to borrow. And we'd also, we've also gotten input from the council that they want more in the EDA fund. So, all of those things are, really didn't get, didn't get addressed to, to much of a degree. The EDA levy was increased by about $20,000, but nowhere near where the council would really like to see it. There may be another way that we can handle that, but this is basically what didn't get funded among a few other things that came up but didn't, didn't get considered at all. Approximately $109,000, roughly a little over $100,000, gives you a half a percent levy increase. So, that's just to give you a reference of how much all of that would, would cost in the levy. So, it is, as I said, this is very early. We typically would not be talking about property tax impact at all, but I wanted to at least let you know that we have some preliminary numbers from the county. We expect the estimated market value to increase by about 5.5%. So, normally, that, that's good news, and it is, except that the median value home, there's been a lot of inflation in the homes, and this has been happening in a lot of other communities, including the home that I live in, over the last couple of years, and it's finally caught up in Maplewood. Big increase in residential homes. So, the median value home increased 10.5%. So, even if you lowered the levy, there would still be a significant increase in taxes in, in residential property because of the shift. Basically, because the median value home was raised from 212,000 to 235,000. That's a significant amount of inflation. It's more than the amount of the total estimated value increase, which means there's a shift from commercial and other properties onto residential. So, what does this mean? Well, I will have much firmer numbers for you in the, in the coming weeks. I, I would tell you that it's difficult to know when we don't know what fiscal disparities are going to come in at because that's, that could be a very big factor in establishing the tax rate. But it could, it could be up to 10, maybe even 12% at, at the high end for an increase in city taxes. to ten, maybe even twelve percent at, at the high end for an increase in city taxes. I know that's, that's a difficult pill to swallow, but many, many metro communities have been seeing fourteen and fifteen in the last couple of years as these, as these homes go up in value. We don't know how long they'll stay there, but this, this is the, you know, kind of the unfortunate picture that we're looking at right now is a very significant increase in residential homes. So, it's not going to be a good year, no matter which way you look at it. Just to talk a little bit about the timeline, I'll go through it quickly. We still have two budget workshops. We'll have a lot more detailed information, a lot more concrete information, as we'll be meeting with the county in the next couple of weeks to get more solid numbers. And then, September ninth would, would be the, the date that you would have to adopt the preliminary tax levy. And then, we'll have the truth in taxation hearing on December eleventh. And that's when the budget would actually be adopted, as well as the CIP. Again, just a little bit about the process. It involves, you know, months and months of work. Department heads, administrative staff start out by calculating everything from the ground up. The CIP then forms the basis for the capital budget. We go through a whole process for that. There's an administrative view by myself, by the city manager. We're talking at a high level with you right now, and we'll be meeting with you in more detail over the next few weeks. We do a significant analytical review in the finance department and starting that right now. And that's where I'll have, you know, more concrete numbers for you coming up. City manager makes some decisions along the way and makes a recommendation for the final budget. Then, we move ahead with those workshops and, and the policy decisions, tough policy decisions that have to be made. So, it involves, you know, many dozens of staff employees, many hundreds of hours, thousands of lines of budget code, and, and millions and millions of dollars. So, it's a, it's a pretty significant undertaking every year. Again, just a little bit about our fund structure. And the only thing that I really want to point out here, I don't want to belabor it. When we talk about our, our budget, we, we have, you know, between seventy and eighty million dollars is pretty much what, what runs through the city books on an annual basis. But the tax levy is, as you can see, about twenty-two million. And that primarily funds the general fund. There's some small exceptions with some capital project funds. But the general fund is primarily what we're talking about when we're talking about the tax levy and what, what we're mostly focusing on when, throughout these, these budget workshops. You know, we'll provide you with more detailed information on all of the other funds, but most of them have their own revenue sources. So, the far left there, the, the general fund is what we're primarily going to be talking about. So, a little bit about the tax levy history. So, since two thousand and thirteen, that's as far back as this chart goes. It averages three point one per year, but you can see there are years where it's been zero and there are years where it's been five. And two thousand and twenty where it's, you know, proposed as five again. Overall, it's still, because we had some zero years in there, it still averages about three point one. So, the tax capacity rate, that's a little bit more complicated to understand. So, does, does everyone know what tax capacity is? You know, maybe for the folks at home. Tax capacity is, it's essentially your tax base. So, it's really a percentage or a ratio of the market value. So, for instance, let's talk about your home. Your home has a specific market value. The tax capacity on that home is a percentage of the market value. You all know that Minnesota has probably one of the most complex tax systems in this, in the country. So, what happens with that market value in Minnesota is there's a percentage that's applied to it, depending on what class of property it is. So, for residential homestead, it's, it's one percent. But however, there, there's a little more complexity than that because with residential homestead, there is a, several tiers, four tiers of homestead, what I'll call homestead credit, for lack of a better term right now. Homestead credit that applies to the tax capacity, depending on the value of your home. So, in the end, you know, you come up with a percentage, and it's a percentage of your, your market value. And all of, all of the property in the city then gets combined, and that's the total tax capacity for the city. That tax capacity then is divided into the, the city's levy. And that's very simply, without talking about fiscal disparities or tax increment, very simply, that's how the tax capacity rate is, is formed. And what you'll see in this chart is that we've been, the city has been trending down pretty much every year. Except for one year in two thousand and fifteen, where there was a significant abatement of the largest, the largest property taxpayer in the, in the city. It was a significant tax abatement, very close to the year end, and causing, causing some problems with the total tax capacity. But what, what it means that this, this rate has been trending down, even though taxes are going up, it means that taxes are going up because of the inflation on the properties. And that the city council has had that extra capacity, but has chosen, you know, to give some of it back to the taxpayers. And so, the tax rate continues to go down. You haven't used the full tax capacity, which is, you know, what I would, what I would admire that about what, what you have done is that you have reduced the tax rate over the years. For, so for two thousand and twenty, even though taxes are going to go up, the tax rate, I expect, will stay pretty close to the same. Even though we know that taxes are going up, your rate really isn't going to do much. I can tell you that now, but it could change when I, I get better information from the county. But the preliminary information looks that way. So, just so that you have, some people like charts and some people like tables. So, on the, on the second page of your staff report, so it starts out with the, the staff report, there's a table that looks like this. And if you could just kind of refer to that as we're talking about this slide. This table includes Ramsey County and all of the cities located in Ramsey County. And so, what's on this table is really reflected in that chart. And like I say, some people just prefer to look at tables. And I understand that perfectly. So, this just gives you a ten-year history of each city in Ramsey County and what their tax increases or decreases were over this ten-year period. And then, the average over the ten years. So, you can see at the top, Ramsey County, despite that the property taxes are very high and the levy is very high in Ramsey, Ramsey County, their levy increases are fairly modest. I think what I would point out about this is there are, there appears to be, and on the chart, the, the blue line is Maplewood's increases, levy increases. And the orange line is the average of the other cities, all of the other cities together. You can see that we're seeing it trending up after the recession. We're seeing it trending up. People are trying to catch up on different things. Cities are trying to, you know, get, get different services back online. Part of the trend is due to some really particular circumstances, like for instance, Falcon Heights. We, we've all read about the challenges that they have in, with their policing and trying to get to a different, different model of policing. The same thing with a couple of the other cities. I don't know for exactly Blaine, but, and some of the cities around us. If you take a look at those, North St. Paul, White Bear Lake, you can see those trending up. Roseville, you can see, you know, some trends there. Some of the, the cities closest to us. So, I guess the, the point is, is that Maplewood has averaged over ten years about three and a half. That won't change much with this five in this year. We hope to get back to three next year. It's really too early to talk about that. But that's, you know, what our goal is always to start with. So, you know, compared to, you know, the other cities, we are below the average. Five point one is the average city and township increase over the ten-year period per year. I know it's a lot of data, and there's a lot of things that go into it. But it, it really just gives you kind of a high-level picture of what's going on out there so that you have something instead of nothing.
Ms. Palseth? Yes. Councilmember Smith has a question.
Is this average of, the average of the actual dollars across the whole county? Or is this average by, by percentage increases in city?
Percentage, percentage increases.
By city, by number. So, St. Paul counts as one?
Yes. St. Paul would be the city of St. Paul. And they had a, a six percent levy increase in two thousand and ten. And then, in two thousand and nineteen, they had a ten and a half. That was actually the other city that I was going to mention. You probably read in the paper about some of their challenges with their street program and their assessments. So, there, you know, there are some outliers here that bring the average up, but...
Right. I'm just wondering if like that outlier, it being St. Paul and having a large tax base is going to impact this more than it would if it were, you know, Lauderdale?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, it is by total tax dollars, not by a number of cities?
It's, it's each city, the levy increase that they had that year. So...
No, I understand that. But when we do the average, like what's the denominator?
The, the average is the average amount of increase over the ten-year period. So, it just averages all of those numbers across and just takes an average.
So, it's not weighted by total dollars?
Right, right.
Okay. Because it seems like most of these are well below sixteen percent. So, I'm surprised that those few large ones drive it as high as they do.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. What, what I found about this was that the trend, even, even after the spike in two thousand and eighteen comeback, coming back down to two thousand and nineteen, you still see kind of a trend there. We'll see what happens in two thousand and twenty. But what, what I think is happening, and by talking to, you know, some of my colleagues, there are things that cities are trying to, services that cities are trying to reinstate after the recession. So, the thing that we'd be looking for is for the council to be considering, are they comfortable with this five percent? What kind of policies, policy decisions might you make on the unfunded items? Did you want us to move some of them up further? For instance, the police officer, did you want that, you know, moved up further in the year? Do you want to wait till we have a little more experience in that before that position goes on? Those kinds of things. And since we're running kind of short on time, I'll, I'll kind of cut it here and go to the questions, I guess, and comments.
Questions, comments, councilmembers?
Any thoughts that you want to share? I know this is a pretty high-level review of kind of where we think we're going, recognizing that there's a lot of information that still has to come in. For our two newest councilmembers, this is kind of typical for our budget year because we have to wait for the county to hear what their plans are. Fiscal disparities, that information will come in in August. But I think, I certainly appreciate staff's effort to give us at least a broad-brush look at where we are and where things might shake out, recognizing that there's a lot of information that is yet to come. Councilmember Knudson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment. What helps me a lot is this graph. Basically, it looks like everybody's had a chance to situationally make a significant levy increase. So, on the average, they tend to balance out. But you see, you know, Blaine at sixteen point one percent, another time at forty-eight. I mean, everybody's had a, a situational year. So, you got to kind of look at the trends and what's behind it. So, I appreciate having all this data.
Yes.
Any other comments, thoughts that you'd like to share with staff, some direction? Councilmember Juneman?
Thank you. As usual from this chair, I think I have a tendency, and it's a good one from my opinion, to rely on you to come to us what, with what is absolutely necessary. And I've sat with all different kinds of groups, from people who think they should red-line by each chair up here, that's entertaining, to thinking that just naming a different percentage will make magic happen. And I think we all know that that is, neither one of those is the road to success. And I, I do believe that it has, over year, the years, become, I think, ever more apparent. I think it's always been to a certain extent true, but it's more apparent now, that staff stands on their heads, trying to give us the most they can for the least increase. I don't think we need to be concerned with anybody asking for the moon. I just don't think it happens. And so, we can ask for some tweaking, and we can ask for some underground figures if we want them. But I do absolutely trust, particularly with this budget process and with our finance department, the people that are in it now, that when it comes to us, it is what it is. So, if we're going to look at changing something significantly, we're, we're looking at taking something away that people want or need. And we just have to accept that responsibility. If we want to do it, fine. But we need to accept that responsibility because I think staff, when they're looking at budgets, is most realistic. And I don't think they're shooting for the moon. And we're known for good services. And so, you know, there are points in history where if you're going to maintain that, it has a price tag. And I do think, years ago, I used to say this because it was a little more, or a little less obvious than, you do in many cases get what you pay for. And once you get your, your citizens used to a really high level of service, then you get to ask them, to a certain extent, what would you like me to do without? And most of the time, they have nothing they want to do without. But I mean, we owe them that. So, if, when people call me, I say, okay, well, you know, I pay taxes just like you do. So, which part of, you know, and once you start unweaving it with people, most of them go, oh, never mind. Because when they are in the same chair we are, they realize that what they're getting is high quality and that it has a price tag. So, that doesn't mean we don't look. I'm not saying that. But I'm trusting that staff has done a lot of looking and a lot of squeezing before they come to us with a percentage.
Mayor and councilmember Juneman, that is true. I appreciate that. The reason that we are recommending the five percent is because we feel it's what's sustainable. We took a look at four and a half, and we really didn't feel comfortable putting the city in that kind of financial position. And the difference between four and a half and five in terms of taxes to the median value home is about five dollars a year. I'm not saying that's a small amount, but I'm just saying in the context of what their overall increase based on their market value is going to be, the cities, you know, the city's increase is going to be pretty much dwarfed by that. So, we, we did end up, you know, having to recommend the five percent because we really do feel that that's what's sustainable. So, if you want to go lower than that, it will require seventy-seven percent of the budget in the general fund is salaries. And, and then, there's, most of the rest of it is contracted services. So, it will require cuts in staff, in services, in contracts. And it will require some serious looking.
Excuse me, Mayor.
One more?
Thank you. And I think that's, that's why I brought it up. It's, if, if this is what anyone thinks, or we want to talk about this, we need to talk then about prioritizing what it is our residents would like to see less of. Because that's what it translates to when you have this kind of a situation. And I think it's a year when, I know we do this frequently, but, you know, I guess it's statutory that county gets to set the limits. We don't like what's happening with evaluations. Don't come here and yell at us. We have nothing to do with it. You know, and I sometimes wonder at the wisdom of the county myself. But not being there, I can't do anything about it. But we are definitely at that, at their whim. And as you pointed out, some years, they stick it to the commercial properties, and then they back off, and then they raise property values. And I, I'm always entertained by people going, wow, look at what I could sell my house for. And then, they turn around and go, but look at my taxes. It's like, okay. They go hand in hand.
It can be difficult for the taxpayer to sort those issues out. You know, they, they...
But again, we cannot say enough, we do not set the valuations on people's properties. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with a, a lot of what Councilmember Juneman says in that I, I do believe in the noble efforts of staff to find every single dollar. And I also feel like our budgeting process has improved significantly over the last couple of years. I think as far as the, both the quality of the data that we get and the quality and the way that it's presented has really improved. So, kudos to you and your team. I think it's, it's a lot to wrangle. I think maybe where I differ a little bit is, is I do feel like it is, we do have a fiduciary responsibility to some degree to get into the weeds. I'm not going to go line by line into the budget because, you know. But I do think we have to dig in to a certain degree. And, and part of it for me is I know about a lot of the work that's getting done as far as driving efficiency in the organization. And I'm not sure it's always demonstrated well in the budgeting process where we can capture the credit for that work that's happening. And as we look at stuff like that added, or that save time for the dog licensing, right, I know that's not a full-time employee. But are there five or ten other things within... operations, within the city, that do add up to a full-time employee? That we do plan for, not through layoffs, but through attrition, or not filling positions, or things like that? And how do we account for those things and make sure that's getting credited back to the budget? And I think, particularly when I first started, less so lately, but where I've always been frustrated, is we sort of have this, like, all right, here's our 2019 budget base of where it was, here's the five new things we want to do, great, here's our 2020 budget. And there hasn't been as much rigor put around, well, what is that base? What has changed about that base in the last year? And is that base still accurate? Before we even start talking about the incremental programs, what are the dynamics within that base budget? Have things significantly changed? Are there efficiencies for us to be had that we have to capture in the budget? Are there other opportunities for us to redeploy those funds into maybe some of those incremental things or other incremental things? So when I get fussy about costouts and things like that, it's partly because I want to make sure we're taking advantage of those costouts to either save money for residents or reinvest into the city, and also a little bit to make sure that for staff who've done a lot of work to create those efficiencies, that we're capturing that and highlighting that through the process, so. But appreciate the work, and I know that you guys are doing way more work than it looks like, and with all noble intent, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? You know, I would concur with my fellow councilmembers that the budgeting process is a challenge because we're dealing with citizens' money and looking at programs and what is it that we offer. And, you know, one thing that I have looked at and thought about is that whenever we make a decision up here at the DS, when we, and I voted in favor of getting rid of the rental licensing and getting rid of the pet licensing, but just in looking at that, one of the things that I think also needs to be addressed is that, that together, over these last two years, that amounts to about a quarter of a percent of our levy, because we decided to get rid of that. And I think maybe we need to focus a little bit more on that in terms of some of those consequences, having those pointed out, and contemplating that when we do make those decisions. Because from a policy standpoint, it makes a lot of sense, but the unintended consequence, or maybe the consequence that we didn't necessarily think about or envision, was that in our next budget, we're looking at making some accommodations for that. You know, from a policy perspective, I think I've been pretty vocal about being in favor of a rental housing ordinance, because I believe that we have properties in our city, we've got some landlords that are doing a great job, and that's not the ones that we need to address. But I believe that we have some unsafe properties in our community, and we need a tool in order to be able to address that. Well, that tool comes with a price tag. And, you know, I know that we have tried to keep the fees down on that. We certainly had, when we had our public events where we had the landlords, and then we invited tenants to come in and talk about this proposed ordinance and get input. People were, you know, objecting to the fees, because of course, it's going to be then, landlords will, no doubt, then that'll be, there'll be a trickle-down effect, and it will go on to the rent of our renters in our city. But there's no other way to actually get some consistency and ensure that every rental property in our community has running water, that they have electricity, that they are safe for children. You know, we have a large migrant population, immigrant population in our city, and I'm concerned that they are being, some of them can be taken advantage of by some landlords, and without an ordinance, that is going to cost us money. We aren't going to be able to adequately protect them. And so the fact that these things cost money, it really is, it's a point for all of us to belabor and think about, that we're the policymakers, and making policy drives budgets. And we have to be able to pay in a reasonable way, in a sustainable way, because, you know, we've told staff that sustainable financial practices are key to our city. So we're, this is a real challenging thing, council members, and I appreciate starting off with this high-level view, and it will shake out, and we will figure all of this out. And I happen to believe that a lot of the discussions that you raised, and I think that that was a good point, the discussions about efficiencies and what's happening, I think a lot of that has happened on the department level, and it's happened with our city manager, with the finance director, and that we're seeing it from a higher-level perspective. So councilmember Juneman, or who was next? I'm sorry, I didn't see. Councilmember Smith? And then councilmember Juneman, and then we'll move on, because we still have presentations to, two other department presentations.
So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor, for your comments, and I do agree with you. I think we need to be a little cautious, particularly when we talk about these specific programs, because, you know, it's easy, it's problematic, because a lot of times when we talk about fees and we talk about programs at the beginning, we talk about the fees being there to fund the cost of the program. And that's, we talk a lot about, you know, we try to look at, how much time does it take for us to manage a program, and then that's how we determine the fees. So that would follow by logic that when you remove the program, there shouldn't, I know there is, but there shouldn't be a revenue hit to the city if you're removing the program and the fees were there to just cover that program. So I think we have to think carefully about what are the financial impacts there, but also philosophically of, all right, if we are removing that service and that program, and the revenue for that program was designed to fund that program, if I were a resident, I would be going, well, okay, then they don't need that money. Does that follow?
Councilmember Smith? I understand what you're saying, but in practicality, unless you laid some of those people off, you're still paying for them, so.
I realize that, I realize that, but that is also a reality, right? That's why I was saying, if we get these incremental savings that add up to an FTE, and we're able to save that money at some point without doing a layoff, either through not rehiring or something like that, at some point, we need to capture back those savings. And that's where I'm coming from, and that's, so I understand what you're saying, but it's disconnected to me to think about, on the front end, we talk about fees funding the program and the time it takes to do the program, and then on the back end, when we get rid of the program, we're looking at as a loss of revenue.
I'm going to make a comment just in response to that. We might have to be juggling around the rest of our agenda, because I think this is an important discussion to have. I would agree with you, if we were in a position where we were overstaffed, where we weren't already lean, and, you know, I would agree with you, but I think that because we are so lean already, I think that it causes me to question that theory. We don't have an abundance of staff, and, you know, let's just take the dog licensing. And I voted, we all voted in favor of that, of getting rid of that, from a policy perspective. But looking at that, that that was actually revenue, yes, now the staff is freed up, but it's not like we had an abundance of staff to begin with, anyway, because our staffing numbers are, I think, we are pretty much spot-on, we are not overstaffed in our city. And so that's an important point, I think, that needs to be said as well. Councilmember Juneman.
And also, just in the case of the dog licenses, you're talking about somebody that does 15 things already and just did the dog licenses as a, by the way, it's here, it has to be done. So that's a lot of what happens to those programs, is that people take on these responsibilities to get them done, and there's some fees to quote-unquote "cover" it, but it often means somebody else is taking on more than they had before, and give them one more thing, and they'll be working 70 hours a week for 40 hours' pay. But I wanted, to what the mayor said about the rental licensing thing, I've been, just since we've been paying so much attention to it, kind of looking at my own neighborhood, because we've had three homes that have been rentals for quite some time with checkered pests. And in all three cases, we're not talking about immigrant people, we're talking about anything from the oddest confirmation of people together, to families who are trying to find a place to live, and in two of the three cases, these homes have never been up to par. And no matter where they go, you know, I try and help them with call code enforcement, blah, 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 nothing happens, basically, or there's a Band-Aid put on a gaping wound. And so we have to invest in our community to make everybody's home safe and a place you want to be, it's just that simple. And it is going to cost us money, and yes, we are trying to do fees that will help cover the costs. But it's like anything else that has value, in my estimation. If you have to pay someone out to make it happen, that's what you do to keep the quality of life in your community where it belongs. And literally, everyone who lives here has a right to a decent place to live. And it's mixed all over. It's not, you know, we, there are some multifamily areas where it's really bad, but I can tell you that peppered through every neighborhood, there are rental units, some of which are not paid any attention to, and people are desperate for a place to live, and they move in, and nothing ever happens in between. And we have nothing we can do to control that. And so I really think this has been, you know, we've been lucky to be able to put it off this long, basically, as a city, if you still want to talk about it, but it's time. And if it costs us something, it costs us something. And my, I had two people call me about it, one is a landlord of one single-family property, I don't think it's much to worry about, and he rents to a relative who's happy, so whatever, doesn't want to pay a fee, I believe, but, you know, that's life. But when I had the conversation, I said, what about the neighborhood your house is in? Do you know everybody else that has a rental, or whether it's owner-occupied? No. And so, you know, there could be one house, five houses away, where somebody doesn't have enough of the right services in that house. And overall, it will affect your value of your property over time. And that has to be something that I am willing, at least, to put to all the taxpayers in this city. If we have to go in and put some money into this program to keep the quality of life high for everyone, it affects your property, whether you have a rental or not. If your neighborhood is going to, you know, wear in a handbasket, because there are unmaintained properties where people are being forced to live, it affects your value. And so we owe it to everyone, not just the renters, everyone, to keep the value of our properties up.
I would say that on a weekly basis, I get emails or phone calls concerning rental properties in people's neighborhoods, that the grass is not being cut, they've got a bunch of garbage in the back, it's unkempt. Exactly, this broken windows, I mean, all sorts of different kinds of problems with the rental property. And so I know we've kind of diverted from our budget discussion, but I think what you're hearing, I think, at least some direction from the council, is that this rental housing ordinance is something that is a priority, that I think we all acknowledge, I look at people's heads nodding up here, that it's going to cost money, and, but it's something that is needed in our community. So, councilmember Smith? And then we'll go with Assistant City Manager Funk next.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. And I think, I just wanted to say one more thing on sort of our exchange here, because I think at the end of the day, we agree. I also agree that we're not overstaffed. I think, I'm thinking about this maybe a little more theoretically than practically, right? If you, yeah, believe it or not. If you look at every person we employ in the city full-time, they have 2,080 hours a year that we pay them for, right? And if one job, if we make a movement here that takes 150 hours away from one of those people of work that needs doing, I'm sure there's 150 hours' worth of other kinds of work that could be done. But if we do that, but now we're taking 150, 200 hours away through various projects across 10 or 15 different projects, all of that together adds up to a person. And if that's at the point where you might start saying, can we reallocate the work with nine people instead of 10, right? I'm not saying that's happened, I'm just saying it's something I think we need to keep our eye on and account for. It's like, you know, like with any project you do around the house, you budget out for it, right? And it's like, you get all the big raw materials and whatnot, and then it's like, the 15 trips to Home Depot that kill you at the end because you're at $10 or $15 apiece, because you didn't budget for those. It's that nickel-and-diming-to-death process, and I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that as we create efficiencies, are we capturing the value for the residents through that process? And in the big, not so much at the person level yet, but at some point, does that add up to something we can reallocate?
Mayor and councilmember Smith, I would agree with you, and I feel like it takes a very strategic approach to get there.
For sure, and it's not easy, and it's not something we can just do.
Assistant City Manager Funk.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. May I wrap this up, because I know our time is running short? Just observing your comments, first, I want to thank the mayor and council for your support of staff during our budget process. I think you've said a lot of things that go into our process, and that is, staff is very thorough. I can tell you, sitting a little bit on the periphery, watching our finance director, our city manager, our department heads are very thoughtful in our budget process, and they're making sure that we are presenting a budget that is thorough, responsible, and meets the needs of our residents. That being said, I just wanted to circle back on just the comments regarding just kind of staffing. Again, reiterating that Ms. Paul Seth mentioned, that a bulk of our budget does revolve around staffing, staffing levels, and the costs associated with having staff, because we're a service-based industry, and that's what we do, is provide a service. Just to give you a little bit of maybe comfort on the employee aspect of it, you're hearing from us tonight, and two presentations hopefully in the next 25 minutes, and even in our last budget workshops, where what we're adding in to you this year in terms of our presentation is more than just a department presentation on the budget, but it's a department presentation on some of the operations, and then you're hearing slides and part of our presentations about efficiencies. So we are trying to acknowledge those and showcase those to you in front of you. And to the points being made here, with those efficiencies, theoretically, does come savings and staff time. And so I think one of the things that I wanted to point out to you was, what we do as a staff, when it comes time to replace a staff member, we have a couple processes in place. One is through our NeoGov system, in which there's an approval string in place, meaning so if a staff person resigns, it's not an automatic, we're posting the next day to fill that position. We're very thoughtful in how we approve that next position, where it starts with a department head making a request that goes to the finance director, the city manager, through the HR's office, so we're kind of vetting through any person that we hire. Part of that process also involves a job description, and I can tell you, we're often tweaking those job descriptions because of the things you've mentioned. There are efficiencies, and some of the things that that employee was doing when they're with us, they're no longer doing, and so we want to make sure we're analyzing that. And if there's ways we can reorganize a department, we've done that, and I can point to probably five or six occasions in the last few years where we have reorganized, changed some job titles and job descriptions around, so that we are taking advantage of the skills that we have from the staff that's in place, and sometimes we haven't necessarily replaced that position one-for-one, where we might have downgraded it from a full-time to a part-time or to some other level position. So wanted you to be aware that we are doing some of that vetting internally, and we're going to continue to do that, and as Ms. Paul Seth says, and I'll end it with this, it is strategic in nature, and I think you're making very good points that we want to strive to continue to look at those situations.
Thank you. I think that was a very helpful discussion, and now we're going to move on to the finance department. Ms. Paul Seth, you get to stay right there.
Thank you. I am going to try to keep this to about five minutes in deference to my colleague who has a much more interesting presentation than I do. So if I could get these slides, please. We're just going to talk a little bit about what goes on in the finance department, maybe. So the mission statement is really all about maintaining the financial health and stability of the city. We'll just move through that very quickly. This is our organizational chart. We also have the deputy registrar, or the DMV, as you might want to call it. We have budgeted for 4.8 people in finance, so we really have about 4.5, actually. Deputy registrar has 6.8, for a total of 11.6. Just seeing the finance staff there, I'd like to point out very quickly, Joe Rube is the assistant finance director, and works very hard, very integral person in our department. These, Chris Weaver is supervisor in the driver and vehicle services division, and this is the staff, minus a couple of the part-timers or temporaries that aren't on there. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the driver and vehicle services, just very quickly. It breaks about even, we actually make a little bit of profit on it, but it doesn't include, you know, any overhead in the expenditures. So we all know the situation out there, we have budgeted for a .6-person FTE increase for 2020/20. You didn't really see it in the chart impacting the levy, because it's offset by an increase in fees. We got a grant for- We got a grant for $125,000, so that grant, we will be able to use for a couple of years to pay for this person. In addition, the state raised the fee a dollar per transaction, so that will provide the $55,000 a year necessary to pretty much pay for the position going into the future.
Can you move to the next slide, please? Thank you.
Sorry. So, again, that's what we were talking about, is the grant and the fee increase. We've been doing a survey of other deputy registrars in the metro area that have similar transaction counts, to find out how many FTEs they're using. They have all expressed, with the exception of maybe one, that they're going to be adding an additional one person, one FTE, or two FTEs. We're finding that the average, you know, it does vary a bit, but the average was around eight, and we had 6.8, so we think that, you know, we're going to be right in there, we'll still probably be about one under the average, when everyone else adds their FTE in as well. Really hoping to relieve some of the pressure. A lot of the deputy registrar's offices are seeing the same things that we're seeing, people are getting, the staff is getting frustrated, people are getting, customers are getting frustrated, staff is quitting, they're having a hard time hanging on to the staff. So, we're really hoping to solve some of that with this new budget and the grant that we received. Some of the functions that the finance department manages, let me go through it real quickly, a whole host of guidance and regulations. We're all about rules in finance, but that's just kind of a smattering of them. A little bit about governmental accounting, just to point out again, that we follow the governmental accounting standards, rather than the financial accounting standards. They're getting to be more and more the same all the time. The government is actually a little bit more difficult. Investing public funds are, why is it different? I guess we talked about that before, you know, the accountability being to taxpayers is very different than the accountability that a business has to the taxpayers, the types of reports that have to be released, what the financial focus on is, it's on current resources, not owner equity, so to Councilmember Smith's point, we actually don't produce widgets here, it's a service organization. Various different legal compliances are very different, and the ability to repay debt is very central to our debt rating. I'm moving through this very quickly, so I apologize, but some of this is a rehash from last year. We do have investment policies, we have to abide by Minnesota statutes for investing public funds, so it's very, very different, public funds investing, especially in Minnesota, very, very different than what you're going to see on your 401K, or your, you know, your investments in the stock market, public entities just aren't allowed to make those kind of investments. So, your money is very safe. As far as strategic priorities in finance, everything we do touches every one of these things, but our primary focus, the lens through, we view all of the rest of the strategic priorities as financial sustainability. And the way that we are going to accomplish that is to maintain our excellent bond rating, maintain our average annual return of investments at our benchmark level, and to continue to receive the awards on our budget and our financial report. To do that, we will have to maintain adequate fund balances, that got into part of our conversation tonight, to maintain our bond rating, and we will also, we've also been continually working on developing financing plans that result in the lowering amount of debt, and that was also very present in tonight's presentation, even though it wasn't explicit, it was implied just about everywhere. And then, our 10-year capital improvement plan and financial management plan is a very important factor in maintaining our bond rating, and they've been very happy with our financial management plan. Again, I won't go through this again, we do have new software that makes it a lot easier for us to track our investments, and we'll continue to receive those awards, and minimize any kind of audit adjustments. Again, there were no adjustments made in the last audit by the auditors. Again, the outstanding debt, here's the progress that we're projecting to make on that over the next 10 years, so continually seeing that fall down below 50, and then below 40. That's also.
Ms. Paul Seth, can you go back to that previous slide, please? I wanted to maybe put a little historical perspective on this. When I joined the council in 2014, we were at just shy of $80 million in terms of our debt, and I really think that, you know, this is an important slide for our city, because I think at that time, the council recognized that there was a certain discomfort with that level of debt, and staff has done a really great job of whittling that debt down, and just in terms of looking at that trend line continuing to go down, while we are still providing, excuse me, excellent service, I think speaks a lot to the dedication of our staff and the commitment, I think, of the council. We adopted the financial guidelines on what we were comfortable with, and we certainly are measuring our expenditures based on those guidelines. You know, we've got, we're just going to finish up with you tonight, Mr. Love can go next time, that way, we can make sure that we really vet the finance department, and, Steve, you get a pass tonight? So, but I wanted council to know that, because that, I think, speaks very well to where we were and where we're headed, just gives a little bit longer perspective, so, thank you.
Thank you, yes. I myself would like to see the debt between 30 and 40. It's going to take us a while to get there, but again, as you know, we have been balancing that priority with the street improvement priority as well, so we're trying to make progress in both.
We didn't get into debt overnight.
Right.
And so, it's going to take us a little bit to get down there, but we're still addressing the road issue, we're still, you know, I think, doing an excellent job in terms of providing services to our community, while being fiscally responsible.
Yes. You heard me talk a little bit about fund balance tonight, this is a kind of a history of where we've been at, our minimum target in order to cash flow our expenses is 41.67% of our expenditures, and our maximum target is 50. You know, we'd like to see it there, but it gives us more flexibility, more reserves to work with. Again, as I mentioned, we will see it kind of dip down a little bit in 2020, because we weren't adding that $200,000, and we're adding fund balance for the recreation fund. I know these concepts are a little bit difficult, and I've gone over them very quickly, but, you know, this is what we watch, and this is important for our rating agencies to see. We're projecting to do okay in 2020, but we will have to stay on top of this each year. Some of the projects we've completed in the last year, we did RFPs for auditors, we ended up keeping the same auditor, but asked for a new partner and a new manager, not that they were doing a bad job, but just because it's good to get a new set of eyes on things. We did municipal advisor RFPs, we did end up getting a new municipal advisor, we had the same one for 50 years, they weren't doing a bad job, they were doing a great job, but, you know, after 50 years, as council reminded us, it's, sometimes, it's good to get another set of eyes, and our new municipal advisors have been doing an excellent job, and we felt, we chose them because we felt that they had more to offer in the economic development realm, so we've been really happy with them. We obviously implemented franchise fees, new investment software, and have changed our financial policies many times. Projects that I'm working on now, or that our office is working on, is putting a financial transparency portal on the website, where citizens will be able to go in and take a look at our expenditures and our revenues, and compare them with other communities. It's taken a little bit longer, because we've been so busy with the budget and with the CAFR, but I hope to get back to that, and we hope to see some progress on that, having that posted on the website sometime before the end of the year. We will get back to you before that happens, but I think that you will like the end product. We also need to upgrade our financial software. I don't know how old it is, but I haven't worked on that level of technology for over 10 years, so it is, you know, it is very, very cumbersome, especially the budget module. It was supposed to be updated in 2018 or 19, it'll be 19 or 20 now, still working on the building permit software, so that will be a big endeavor. And I'm also looking at, you know, maybe thinking about getting budget software to make it a little bit more efficient, using a variety of spreadsheets and Word documents is not always that efficient, so taking a look at budget and financial reporting software. I won't go over these statistics, we're really, really busy, we do a lot of work.
[laughter]
And so does the DMV, and you know that already, so.
A lot.
Some of the future goals in finance, we'd like to produce a popular financial report, so instead of a big CAFR, we'll still have the big CAFR, but in addition to the big CAFR, citizens may have a two-page document that's very understandable and readable, it's been a goal of mine, is to get that done as well. And we continue each year, and we're doing it in this budget process as well, reducing the number of funds, streamlining those funds, processes, procedures, you know, we do that, we work a little bit on that every year, and, you know, continually working towards that AAA bond rating. And in the DVS, looking at some new software that might possibly help check customers in, and, you know, help speed things up a little bit. And once we get that new person establishing an express line for the driver's license, hoping to improve that average wait time, that is now 20 to 60 minutes, and even more on some days. So, if you have any questions, I would be happy to stand for them now.
Councilmember Juneman has a question.
Actually, it's not a question, it's a comment, because you didn't go over the numbers, but this might be of interest to people at home, I would think. For the total average of transactions in the driver and vehicle services, the number of motor vehicle transactions is 59,000, that's a lot of transactions, and the total average transactions per hour is 54. If you've been here standing in line, and you get to the front, and all of a sudden, they say, I'm sorry, but the state computer system is down, you think you want to gnash your teeth? How about the people behind the counter? They want to help people very badly, as quickly as possible. How they haven't lost their minds in the last year and a half, I don't know, but I know that some people get really irritated, and I'm just asking people to be a little bit patient, but I have to say, I was out here to get my driver's license renewed last week, and I was just flabbergasted. Two people sitting beside me had no idea what Menlars was. I'm like, oh, my goodness. So, I just kind of gave the 32nd Reader's Digest condensed form, and said, but, you know, that's why you don't want to yell at these poor people, because they want to help you faster than you want to be helped, but if the state computer goes down, they can't do anything for you. And I'm like, oh! So, we're kind of begging for some patience, and it isn't our people, it really isn't, and they're still managing 54 transactions per hour, I'd say that was pretty good.
Mayor and councilmember Juneman, we actually had that situation. In fact, our supervisor, Chris Weaver, if she has time, she will go out into the crowd and review the paperwork, so that people don't have to stand in line for an hour, but she doesn't always have time to do that, there isn't always enough people on staff. So, and that's part of what this new software would help with as well, that we did have a situation where the staff had to push the panic button, because a, you know, a customer was so irate.
Yeah.
That they ended up having to.
And that helps everybody howl, is always the question that runs through my mind, but considering the disadvantage they're working at, many days a week, I really admire their ability to keep on going, and I will say that, I'm not sure if there's a better way to do it, but three people that day didn't realize there was a separate line for tabs.
Right.
And I said, it's right there, but maybe we need to do something out here in the lobby before they get there, because they were like, one woman said, oh, bless you! Because she didn't want to sit in that long line. So, it's there, maybe we just need to help people see it better.
Any other questions? I see none. Thank you, Ms. Paul Seth, for both very important presentations, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And, yes, Mr. Love, you will be on the next agenda. We want to make sure that you get as much time as you need. So, with that, we, it is 6:55, and we are adjourned.